Will counsel please come to order? And will the clerk please call the rule?
Anderson.
Present.
Oliver.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Hager Smith.
Here.
Mattingly.
Here.
Sutphen.
Here.
Watson.
Present.
Will the Vice Mayor please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to begin our meeting this evening with a recognition for Paul Lancaster. If you'll meet me at the podium, is that a podium or a dience or what is that? Table. Meet me at the table.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I want to say it's been too long, but you probably don't feel that way.
It depends. Looking at tonight's agenda, it hasn't been too long.
Whereas Paul Lancaster is a native of Dunkirk, New York, and graduated from Washington and Lee University with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Journalism. Whereas Paul has extensive experience in broadcast journalism, public affairs, public relations, interviewing, media training and management. Whereas Paul used this experience on his appointments to the many boards and committees he served, such as the Board of Directors for the United Way of Montgomery County, the Blacksburg Planning Commission and its Long Range Planning Committee, the Blacksburg Open Space Conservation Committee, Blacksburg Affordable Housing Management Team, the ADA Committee and the Blacksburg Town Council. Whereas Paul's life has always been centered on making Blacksburg exceptional for all who admire, respect and love the town of Blacksburg. Whereas Paul's devotion to this community is demonstrated by his strong civic involvement in the town of Blacksburg. Now therefore, I, Leslie Hager Smith, Mayor of the town of Blacksburg, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2025, as Paul Lancaster Day. And call on all friends and family to gather to celebrate this wonderful person and to acknowledge and appreciate what he has meant to each and every one of us.
Well, thank you very much. All I can say is thanks for getting the chance to work with a variety of folks in the town of Blacksburg. And I wish I could continue it, but maybe I will someday. I'm optimistic. So we'll see. Thank you.
We appreciate you. We will move on now to our consent agenda for the evening. And it begins with approval of the Town Council minutes for February 18th and 25th. Also consolidation of our erosion and stormwater management regulations. Ordinance 2061 to repeal existing town code sections 10 through 100, 10 dash 100 through 10 dash 20, 213 pertaining to erosion and sediment control regulations as part of adopting a new consolidated erosion and stormwater management ordinance. An ordinance 2061B to repeal existing town code sections 18 dash 600 through 18 dash 629 pertaining to stormwater management regulations as part of adopting a new consolidated erosion and stormwater management ordinance. And ordinance 2061C to amend the town code by incorporating the provisions of the Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities Model Erosion and Stormwater Management Ordinance into the town code, Chapter 10, at new sections 10 dash 100 through 10 dash 130. Our action this evening will be to introduce this ordinance and schedule it for a public hearing on April 8th. Next is Resolution 3B25 transferring $360,000 between water and sewer fund capital projects. We also have a Resolution 3C25 transferring $2,375 and change between water and sewer fund capital projects. And a Resolution 3D25 approving revisions to the town of Blacksburg employee rules and regulations. What is counsel's pleasure on the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Oliver.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Hager Smith.
Aye.
Mattingly.
Aye.
Sutphen.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
We are moving now on to public hearings. We have quite a few this evening. We begin with ordinance 2062, and this is rezoning 2.8 acres of land at 801 North Main Street in the 800 block of Cabridge Street, 100 block of Winston Avenue and 900 block of Progress Street from general commercial and R5 transitional residential district to planned residential district zoning. And these are moving forward together, right? Okay. So.
You want staff report and then you'll vote on each item separately.
Yeah, okay. But shall I go ahead and describe ordinance 2063? Okay, 2063 is vacating about 2,000 square feet of town-owned alley right-of-way between the 800 block of Cabridge Street and the 900 block of Progress Street Northwest. And Resolution 3E25 grants conditional use permit to use an alley for non-single unit residential dwellings between the 900 block of Cabridge and the 900 block of Progress Street. And Kenzie will give us our staff presentation.
Thank you. The three requests tonight will be presented in a single presentation but will be acted upon separately by the Town Council. At the conclusion of applicant rebuttal, the Town Council will make a motion and then take action on the three items separately with the rezon being first. The first item we will be covering is the request to vacate approximately 2,000 square feet of an existing town-owned alley. There is an existing alley that runs parallel to Cabridge and Progress Streets that exits onto Main Street at a curb cut near the Speedway gas station. This is an aerial image showing the location of the alley. You can see that it is partially improved with pavement between the warehouses. The entrance onto Main Street is gravel. In this image, you can see the gravel entrance onto Main Street next to the retaining wall behind the Speedway gas station. The application exhibit shows the area to be vacated, which is approximately 2,000 square feet. The adjoining properties are subject to the rezoning request and therefore would not be affected by the vacation of the alley as a means of ingress or egress. The alley currently provides access to the rear of commercial properties along Cabridge Street, Winston Avenue and Progress Street. There are no residential uses with access to the alley. However, these properties are subject to the rezoning request and will no longer be in commercial use if the rezoning request is approved. The alley does not provide access to any other parcels. It is separated from the Speedway gas station via retaining wall. Next, we will review the conditional use permit to use an alley for non-single unit residential use. Zoning ordinance, Section 5719A, states that alleys shall only be used for single unit residential and that all other uses shall require a CUP in all zoning districts. The proposal is to improve a portion of a paper unbuilt alley to access the townhome-style multifamily units. As proposed, the improved portion of the alley would dead-end at the property line and not continue behind the homes in the 900 blocks of Cabridge and Progress Streets. This is the location of the alley in the 900 block of Cabridge and Progress Street. You can see in this image that it is unbuilt or unimproved. There are no homes with access off the alley. As proposed, the alley would be improved with pavement and provide access to the townhome-style multifamily units and dead-end at the property line. It is not proposed to continue through the block. Finally, we will review the overall rezoning request. There are a number of properties involved in this rezoning request and a number of individual property owners. The applicant is LV Collective and is the contract purchaser of all of the properties. The total rezoned area is approximately 2.8 acres with the area of the right-of-way to be vacated included. Currently, there are a number of buildings with a mix of uses, including commercial and warehousing as well as vacant buildings. The current zoning and future land use designations are split along Winston Avenue. The rezoning area is shown in blue on the map. The development proposal entails the construction of several buildings, including one mixed-use commercial and multifamily building with structured parking and several townhome-style multifamily buildings with surface parking. The development also includes a contribution to the town's affordable housing fund. There are several entrances to the parking garage along Winston Avenue and Cabridge Street. There are wider sidewalks along Winston Avenue, Cabridge Street, North Main Street and Progress Street. There is additional plantings that are shown along the western property line adjacent to the single-family neighbors. There's one entrance to the surface parking lot via the improved alley and the commercial entrance along Main Street. Rezoning requests are evaluated for their conformity to the comprehensive plan, the relationship of the proposal to the general planning program of the town, and whether or not the change furthers the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the community, the need and the justification for the change, which is the applicant's burden to prove, and the effect of the proposed change on the surrounding neighborhood and public facilities. The comprehensive plan future land use designation is split between commercial and medium-density residential. The comprehensive plan commercial designation does not contemplate residential density. However, residential uses are allowed in the implementing zoning districts. The comprehensive plan medium-density future land use designation envisions up to 20 bedrooms per acre for multifamily uses. Even when evaluating only the proposed townhome-style multifamily density on the medium-density residential area, the proposed density of 77 bedrooms per acre exceeds that which was envisioned in the future land use designation for this area. There are a number of different points in the comprehensive plan to consider evaluating in this request. There is a concern over the loss of commercially designated land for residential development as well as the need for services and commercial development will continue to grow with a growing population. Similarly, there is a concern that there's not enough affordable housing in the town to serve all of its residents' needs. Meanwhile, this site is in an area designated as mixed-use with student housing, consistent with the North Main Street study conducted by Development Strategies. In addition, the 2019 Student Housing Policy Guide guides counsel to consider student housing requests and evaluate opportunities for development and redevelopment of student housing in areas that are supportive of this type of development with regards to infrastructure and neighborhood compatibility. This graphic from the North Main Street study indicates that this area is appropriate for student housing, which informed the later 2021 comprehensive plan update that added the mixed-use with student housing areas on the map. In the zoning ordinance, there is a statement of purpose for each district. The PR district allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application plan and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes would require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. The zoning is split between general commercial in the red and R5 transitional residential in the yellow. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The PR district allows an applicant to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table, on the screen, and also in the staff report. The applicant proposes a zero-foot setback on all sides. However, the building will be set back from the back of the sidewalk by a landscape area. The applicant proposes wider sidewalks than the required five-foot minimum on all street frontages. The proposed multifamily building will be eight stories tall. The proposed townhomes multifamily buildings will be three stories tall and approximately 35 feet. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR district and as a use and design standard for townhomes and multifamily. A minimum of 20% is required. The applicant is proposing several outdoor terrace spaces for residents as well as indoor space such as lounge and business areas to meet the minimum 20% requirement. Use and design standards govern the development of a particular use in any zoning district. The use and design standards for multifamily uses are intended to provide an attractive, street-oriented development with appropriate connections and open space. Most of the use and design standards for townhomes pertain to physical appearance and layout of the units. The intent is to provide a more single-family appearance than that of a larger monolithic building. The following renderings dated November 27th show various facades of the main building and the townhome-style buildings. This is the North Main Street and Cabridge Street showing the commercial frontage on Main Street. This is North Main Street and Cabridge Street showing the commercial parking entrance and the main building beyond. This is the view of the multifamily building from Main Street and Progress Street. You can see the building articulation and change of materials and color that break up the facade of the structure. This rendering shows the increased building step-back above the third floor of the main building. This rendering looking down Winston Avenue shows the wider sidewalks than required. And this is a view of the townhome-style buildings along Winston Avenue. The standard of 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom accommodates resident plus guest parking and is typical of student apartment living where unrelated individuals occupy bedrooms. The planned residential district allows an applicant to propose an alternate standard. The applicant's justification for a lower standard includes proximity to campus and downtown and adjacent bus stop on North Main Street. The applicant is proposing double the minimum parking for bicycles. There will be a bike room on the ground floor of the multifamily building holding at least 358 bikes. Additional bike parking is provided outdoors near the townhomes, and some of this bike parking is covered. Landscaping is required to be provided per the zoning ordinance. Buffer yards in the planned residential district should be evaluated at the time of the application to determine compatibility with the neighborhood and the development. The minimum tree canopy should be as per similar uses, which in this case would be multifamily and require 10% canopy coverage. Parking lot landscaping is required for all surface parking lots, and street trees are required to be provided on all public street frontages. Signage should be evaluated for its appropriateness to the development and the surrounding area. In the planned residential district, the applicant's signage package is proposed as a part of the overall development proposal. The applicant has proposed a signage plan as a part of the application. This slide shows several excerpts from the signage plan showing several different types and size of signage proposed, ranging in size from 15 square feet to 280 square feet. Development standards require that sidewalks must meet code where they do not exist today. Although there is existing sidewalk on some of the street frontages, none of it has the required four-foot vegetative strip. The zoning ordinance requires that the applicant must construct new sidewalk with a vegetative strip or request a modification to the standard. The applicant has requested a modification to not require the four-foot vegetative strip and instead install the five-foot sidewalk behind the back of curb along the street frontages within the development. This configuration may be more appropriate to an urban setting as proposed. The stormwater concept plan has been approved. Town Public Water and Sanitary Sewer Service serve the site and are adequate to support the development.
The subject property lies within the floodplain overlay district, which is the regulations from FEMA for drainage areas larger than one mile or for the town regulation for drainage area greater than 100 acres. These visuals show the town-regulated floodplain and the FEMA-delineated floodplain.
There are two modifications that are required and requested. One, to allow more than one yard of a townhome to be improved with a driveway and/or parking. And the second, to allow the construction of sidewalk without a four-foot vegetative strip. The proffer statement includes proffers for substantial performance, maximum building height, a parking policy for residents, occupancy restrictions, a proffer for the proposed signage, building sustainability in the form of energy efficiency performance, a contribution to the town's affordable housing fund. And the applicant has also proffered several items with regard to stormwater management and floodplain overlay, including a floodplain report showing compliance with floodplain overlay district, satisfactory flood conveyance channel design, dedication and vacation of public drainage easements, and maintenance access. The Planning Commission heard the requests at the January 8th, 2025, public hearing and made the recommendations for approval of all three requests. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of staff. We also have other engineering staff if you have specific questions for them as well.
Questions?
I have a question about parking. We know that this parking standard is below what we normally require, which may result in overflow parking into neighborhoods. And I wanted to know what were the remedies, I think Mark may be able to answer this, for surrounding neighborhoods?
Yeah, probably the best remedy for parking in a situation like that is to look at the permit parking program that's in the town code. It's typically used in areas close to campus or close to downtown where non-residents typically park in residential areas. And there's a process that neighborhoods can go through to request that. They can, neighborhoods can either sign a petition to request the permit parking or it's something that the town can initiate on our own. Typically, the way it works is it goes to the town's traffic committee. There's typically a parking, essentially a parking survey or an observation period that happens where we go in and look at the parking situation, look, essentially count cars, count for how many cars belong to the neighborhood and how many cars are parking there from outside. And if it meets certain criteria, then it qualifies for permit parking. And then there's also two different, there's two different types of permit parking. We have the kind of regular 24/7 permit parking that's restricted all the time, where the residents can get permits to park in their area. They get two permits for free. I think they can get up to four total. I think the third and the fourth cost $5 each. And then there's also accommodations for guests and visitor parking. There's another version of permit parking, which is what we call a limited permit parking, and that's more for daytime. So that's better for areas that are, say, close to campus, that people would maybe try to commute in, park their car, then walk to campus. So that, so we, and we can use either depending on the situation in the neighborhood. So that's the best remedy for any parking that would overflow or spill out somewhere else.
And would you say that program has been successful in other places?
Yeah, I think the residents that live in those areas would say it's successful. Yeah.
I think the areas are Progress Bennett Hill and also Miller South Side.
Yeah, those are most of the areas. There's some others scattered around town, too.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Now we have an applicant's statement on all three items.
Sure. There was a presentation. First of all, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. You guys have been a great audience and very helpful through the process. Thank you for being here tonight. Chris Johnson. If I need to, 20262, Laporte Meadows Drive, Frankfurt. Thanks again for your attention. I'll try to use brevity for those pages, which you've seen multiple times. We've already discussed the Blacksburg strategy and the location, which has been identified. Our site is located on for densified student housing. One point by this particular exhibit shows the five-minute concentric walk circles, proving that the site is highly walkable to campus, downtown and other commercial goods and services. A quick accounting of what is existing there currently, which talks about the existing commercial, DeRose, The Pampered Pets and Hevner, and then the totaling of some of the vacant units as well as heavy equipment storage that is directed towards the alley in Winston. Why hasn't this been developed before? The subject property is largely sitting vacant. It has a negative impact on the quality of life, but the flooding issues are really what's preventing the ongoing development here. And you can see an example of the corner, hard corner of Winston and Cabridge, the frontage on Winston, with some of the large equipment storage and a couple of shots down the alley connecting Maine and Winston. And just to illustrate very quickly, the dark green being the only areas of this collection of parcels that are not actually part of a floodplain. So right now, developable by right is only about half an acre. By the work that we are hoping to do to mitigate the floodplain, you would see the developable area increase by two and a quarter acres, reaching that 2.8 acre total. This was part of our groups and our team trying to understand, you know, does this make sense in terms of the overall neighborhood and the factor of market affordability, to which much research has been done on the constraint of a housing. So as you can see, the yellow, the orange and blue are single-family homes. The orange, the quite populous color, is non-owner occupied rental. The blue are owner occupied. The red are multifamily. And the highlighted darker brown is the subject site. Would also just mention, out of what we're calling the shadow market, over 16,000, close to 700 students not occupying on-campus or larger developments like the one we're proposing today. So occupying some of those houses and perhaps driving in from out of town. How did we intend to address the strategies for this project? Well, we've talked a lot about the stormwater and had the pleasure of listening to the work of Ms. Coffey Howard through Ms. Carolyn Howard's presentation at the last work session. This shows the area of study and really the understanding that this type of flooding is too large to fix with individual parcels and needs a larger project. You can see on the bottom the diagram of the proposed stream channel actually cutting through the entire project and taking the water from Progress through Cabridge and downstream. A couple of quick exhibits that we've shown before. On the left is your 10-year flood. On the right is the 100. The light blue is existing conditions. The darker blue are the proposed conditions after the work has been done. You can see the 10-year clears the Progress and Maine intersection and all of Winston. The 100-year clears the majority of the, or half the progress, Winston-Maine intersection clears the progress Winston intersection and significant residential parcels along Winston. The total investment early in the project was around $3 million. We're thinking that's probably grown slightly by now. 400 linear feet of aging and undersized pipes. Flow area has increased by 400%. And wanted to mention, highlighted in the corner, the resiliency plan for the town of Blacksburg offers incentives for land and property owners as an adaptation and resilient strategy for upgrading town infrastructure. What other reasons does this make as a good student site, a highly walkable student site? The walk score, the bike score, very successful anyplace you put them in the country. Those are very high marks. So knowing the connectivity of this site, as everyone does, the one question that was brought to us is how do you keep multimodal transportation, non-single-occupant vehicle transportation off of the Main Street roundabout? And we worked with staff to understand dropping that and creating a multimodal room, a bike room, over 350 bike stalls planned and a separate lobby that empties you out 14 feet below Main Street onto Cabridge and across from Webb will push people in the direction to the nearest signalized intersection to cross over Price's Fork. A quick mention of the proposed retail. We have 2,500 square foot of an award-winning coffee shop that will hug the corner. It has an outdoor seating area. It will be open day one with the apartments. We also have booked into the Main Street frontage of our site with a 2,300 square foot space for additional local commercial and 21 retail dedicated parking stalls that have easy access directly to Main Street from behind these positions. In between in the red, you'll see our lobby and co-work as well as our leasing offices. New bus shelter will be put onto Main Street, and this will bring close to 760 new customers within walking distance of several existing commercial uses. A quick design outline of imagery and some initial planning to happen on the first floor frontage of the commercial and the lobby opening. And then one other strateg- And then one other strategic growth, talking about housing types, which was a very early and astute conversation with a number of the folks here on the town council, which was, we've had a lot of student housing. What else could we talk about with you? And we thought, bringing market rate housing does a few things here. If we can take a look at putting that on the other side of Winston, we now have the opportunity to beautify Winston, to bring up a little more density that is not connected to a larger student development. So we would be bringing student and market rate housing. The market rate also provides a transitional height into the residential neighborhood and a large vegetated buffer. Thirdly, the affordable housing donation, which we'll talk about a little more in the proffer. So moving through to the Winston beautification that occurs by taking both sides of the street and developing it for housing, 30 units with street-facing front doors and active residential urban street, new street paving, sidewalks, on-street parking, street trees and street lighting, 600 to 650 linear feet of new underground electrical and telecom lines, better maintained with an underground placement, and dedicated ground-level parking behind units or otherwise architecturally screened from view. So these, these are things that we've worked with staff. We feel very happy with the outcome here and being able to, you know, follow that lead. The last, not the last, but one of the other strategies that we'd like to focus on is the density. We're hearing many comparisons about density numbers. We did some quick studies. What would a currently approved project look like if we structured the parking underneath it? And what you see is abbreviated as modified density on the bottom of these different projects. And you can see all of these come much closer to what we're asking at the 269 beds per acre, 255, 224. In reverse, we saw, we thought, well, what does this look like if we take our parking and we spread it out like the other projects? Well, those projects have a great deal of acreage. This would bring another 3.78, almost four acres of parking. That would be a total of 6.62 acres. And there aren't a lot of sites that are walkable from the campus that are 6.62 acres large. Also to note that this is a reduction of the heat island effect. By taking this parking and moving it under the building, you're getting 175% more efficient land use. But by spreading it out, our density is at 115 beds per acre, which if you recall, is much closer in comparison to a number of these other projects at 91 and 114 beds per acre. Lastly, we took a look at what would all of the projects we looked at feel like if they were fit on one site? And we could fit about 83% of all the projects just mentioned on the edge site alone, 99% of them if we were using the density that we're claiming here. So our massing and design strategy, this is one of the last ones we talked about where we were doing what we could to redesign the building, make the Cambridge Street as beautified as the rest of them, set the building back, set the building back from the back of curb, and then again from the building edge. This shows how we have taken that approach. You can see the different processes and the rules that we were trying to follow that had been in conversation regarding height and setbacks. This is sort of a loose massing. And this is the envelope that was derived from the height conversations that we were hearing about the downtown area. And as you can see, we fit within the envelope. We also have some additional negative space, so there is still room to play within this The height and the step back at Cambridge is, I'm going to go through these a little quicker, but this shows in more detail those specific steps and how that looks, similar to Winston, where we're seeing steps back on the terraces. This is turning the corner at Winston. And I think last time I left this view out, so this is the actual edge of the Progress-Main Street and Winston intersection. Along Main Street, where it is brought down to no greater than 65 feet, and as you can see, sitting on top of the brick-clad plinth to try to emulate what is actually going on in the downtown at present. And this walks us around to the other side. Some of these will look familiar from staff presentation. This diagram talks a little more about the roof, why the heights are seen as they are, and the depression of the grade actually around the building. And the additional height that was asked for, for all the roof ordinances, be it stair overruns or elevators, and those are called out in some of the smaller text, but I assume you guys have seen those. This is again, some of the grading, and you can see the 260 on the bottom where it is, again, difficult without downstream improvement to remove all that floodwater, and you're seeing some of your tallest portions of the building there. And a comparison very quickly, more drawn out to some other larger buildings, this one being Gilbert Place, where we can see relatively two and three stories lower than the Gilbert Place building. A couple of in-situ renderings to show what this would look like opposite the roundabout and what it would look like looking south down Main Street. Very quickly, want to address our affordable proffer. This at 1.138 and a half million. And again, to address our, our sustainable proffer, which is at 32, energy use intensity less than or equal to 32, which is well below the national average and typically operates above the 90th percent level for sustainable buildings. In summary, the existing conditions exhibit absent in the new development activity because of prohibitive existing conditions. Utilizing the town zoning as designated and planned, it creates a walkable downtown, an extension of Main Street in a previously underutilized and undevelopable parcel. The redevelopment to address this would need the same capital investment as the town's infrastructure. How does the project address affordability? In a few different ways. The proffer being one, the creation of now new developable area for real estate and housing, and the added relief to taxpayers eliminating the $3 million stormwater improvement. The storms who are investment in combination with land use efficiency has a number of different benefits, environmental, economic advantages, quality of life, and proposed multifamily housing offers a more sustainable and efficient and vibrant urban environment with a range of social and economic benefits. Those sustainable impacts we just mentioned and would add about the three acres of urban heat sink reduction by stacking our parking under the structure, reducing daily trips with the reduced parking count, including the e-bikes and EV charging of some vehicles giving preferred parking, reducing overland flow and pollutant particulate runoff from existing conditions, those large equipment storage areas. They have old equipment there. Every time it floods, it carries that downstream. Climate vulnerability. This talks more about the storm improvements, so I will continue to go there. Other community benefits, we've gone through this, but just to reiterate, flood reduction is immediate at the time of completion. Creating nearly 60 new units of market rate, screened from existing residential neighborhoods, screening the larger building from existing residential neighborhoods. Neighborhood beautification, creation of more fully ADA accessible dwellings, again, new bus stop right outside our front door, ADA ease getting back and forth to the transit. 4,800 square feet of new retail space from Main Street with 21 dedicated parking stalls generates over 600,000 in taxes and fees. Talked about the bus shelter, job creation, both temporary and long-term, and having the benefit of our award-winning design team. At the Plan Commission, there were some notable talking points after. If you have watched this, this is redundant, but I will say, in my time doing this, there were some very moving, some very moving expressions by your Plan Commission members. They were also very complimentary of the job we've done to date, and I hope you have seen the effort that we put into this package and if there's any other questions that I can answer for you, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
I have a question, Chris. And I want to make sure, I want to rehash a part of this, just make sure I understand it properly. What you were saying about surface parking is that you measure density of a development, like the hub or the union or some of these other things, the edge, you measure density including the area that is covered with asphalt. So what you're saying is that your density in this project is comparable to others if, if we weren't measuring apples and oranges, I think is what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay.
And that's correct.
Are there other questions for the proposer? Okay. If not, I'm going to, thank you very much. If not, I'm going to open this up to public comment. And I know some of you have been here before and others not. So our routine is that we have a little stoplight up here, and when you come up and begin your comments, you, you are invited to state your name and your address, and our clerk will be making a public record of your comments. And the manager will hit the stoplight, so you'll know, you know, green is go, and then yellow warns you that your time is coming to a close. And you get three minutes. So Paul Lancaster, who was here earlier, some of you saw us give him a presentation. Occasionally over the years, we will hear from people that, gosh, three minutes, it doesn't seem like very lo, very much. And Paul's remark to that always was, well, you know, if Abraham Lincoln could deliver the Gettysburg Address in three minutes, probably we can aim for that. So seems fair enough.
Clarify, so this, the comment is for any of the three items, the two, the two ordinances and the conditional use promoted?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Who would like to speak?
My name is Karen Everhart. I've emailed you all here recently, and I live at 2101 Broken Oak Drive in Blacksburg, out on North Main Street. I want to say that I would have hoped that the presentation by the developer would have made me feel better. It didn't. It actually makes me feel more anxious about this development. As you can probably guess, I'm here to speak out against it. I have lived in Blacksburg for 40-plus years, and I've observed many changes and challenges that have gone on in the town. I know the solutions are not easy, and I know that you guys have had a hard time making a lot of these decisions, but I really feel like this is the first time I've come to speak before you. I feel like, you know, it's, it's time, and I feel like this development is not appropriate. I don't, I'm not against the development, the high-rise, the fact, I'm, I'm against the location. I think the location where this is being considered is, it's not a good location for that many apartments, for that many people, for the townhomes, for that high a density in that one tiny bit of area. I'm also kind of upset about the fact that they've asked to not provide as much parking as we typically require. I feel like the town that we already don't require enough parking, it's naive to think that students are coming and they are not going to bring a car with them, you know? I mean, yeah, they can walk, you know, five minutes to, as the gentleman showed us, five minutes to campus, to downtown, but where are they going to buy their underwear? Where are they going to buy, you know, things for their apartments, for blenders or whatever? They're not going to walk anywhere to buy those things. And I, I would beg to say, they're not even going to walk to buy their groceries. You know, it's still a good distance to be carrying a load of groceries home with you. So to have less parking rather than more parking is a very naive thing to do. They're, they're going to bring their cars. I also feel like it's time that we need to stand up to Virginia Tech. We are not responsible for providing housing for them, for their students. It is not our responsibility as the town. It's the responsibility of Virginia Tech, and, and they have plenty of land that they, this development could go on. And I feel like it's time for the town to say enough is enough, and we need to start standing up to Virginia Tech and saying that we're not going to provide housing for every single one of their students. I'm concerned about safety. I'm a past Rescue Squad member. I'm a retired ER nurse, and safety is probably one of the biggest things that I'm concerned about. I think that the, the idea that you're going to funnel the, all the students down to the, I guess it's the light at Tom's Creek and Progress, I mean, Prices Fork, I think that's a really great idea, but again, it's naive. I don't think that's where they're all going to go. And I think that at the traffic circle, I know, I have watched several students just recently almost get hit because there's so much going on there, and you're looking in the wrong direction, and students crossing is, they may be crossing over here, and you're looking in a different direction. And so my time's up, but I have a lot more I could say about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Harwood, 1021 Montgomery Street. Good evening, council members. I stand before you as a resident who deeply cares about the future of Blacksburg. Tonight, you have a choice, one that will define where you stand and who you represent. Will you stand with the residents of this town, or will you cave to a developer chasing a cash grab? In 2019, most of you were on council, when you passed Resolution 2F19. To protect Blacksburg from unchecked profit-driven development, you stated that student housing proposals must include significant commercial and office space and be thoughtfully designed, respectful of our neighborhoods, and geared towards serving the entire community, not just one select group. We, the residents, supported this resolution then, and we support it now. This project violates Resolution 2F19 in three major ways. We already have approved enough student housing. Prior to 2019, the town approved more than enough student housing to meet Virginia Tech's projected growth over 10 years. Since then, older complexes have been redeveloped into more student housing. Yet tonight, you're being asked to approve an eight-story luxury apartment building charging $1,500 per bedroom, which does, does nothing to address the real housing crisis in Blacksburg. Number two, it fails to include the required commercial and office space. This project removes nearly 35,000 square feet of commercial space and puts back only 4,700 square feet. The developer is adding a coffee shop that they own, competing with already-present local businesses, and leaving only one small space for another. Where is the significant square footage that's dedicated to commercial and office uses that you've required in Resolution 2F19? Number three, it disrespects the character of Blacksburg. An eight-story building, the largest in town, does not fit here. It is out of scale with the surrounding neighborhoods, and it ignores the community's values. In addition, a study is badly needed to determine how many off-campus students have cars and how many would give up their cars to live at this location in order to say for sure whether development at this location would have any impact, supporting bus, bike, walk initiatives, and decrease the need for parking. The burden falls on residents, not the developer. If approved, we, not the developer, will deal with the long-term consequences. This project will increase traffic congestion, reduce parking in existing neighborhoods, and fail to provide basic necessities for people who would live there. Tonight, your vote defines where you stand. Will you uphold your own resolution and stand with the residents who have written, spoken, and pleaded with you to reject this proposal or this project? Or will you ignore the very guidelines meant to protect us and bow to a developer looking for profit? I'm putting my faith in you to do the right thing. Vote no or delay the vote until you do due diligence. Gather the necessary data and require changes that align with our town's needs. This is our town, and this is your moment to do the right thing and to prove that you're listening. Vote no or delay the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. If we spend a lot of time in gesturing and, and clapping or booing, we won't get through this.
Hey, good after, good evening. I just want to go ahead and I fully expect you guys to accept this proposal. I've seen it, I've seen the track record of the town council, and typically that's the case. I've seen what the planning commission voted on. I expect that it's going to be accepted. My, my encouragement is to decline it and to offset the things that they're going to take from us, from this town. There's a lot that this town offers, right? Bikeability, walkability. It's got a beautiful tree canopy, right? It's got a beautiful landscape. It's got all of these things, and that proposal showed us none of that. They will only take from that. They will only take from our greenways and put up concrete and all of that. And so what this developer could do is they could build right there. Thank you, son. Sorry about my precious job. They could come in and they could build there, and that would be okay. And then they could also go and donate tons of money to go and help us buy up other places where we could build up pocket parks, where we could build and install more trees and all that, all around. Thank you, son. They can do all that. We can offset these things that they're going to take from us, right? I don't disagree with the location, and we can go and all that, but I do disagree with it's eight stories tall, it's going to block our view, it's going to add traffic, it's going to do all of those things, and we know it. And the expectation, I think, of all of these people, who I assume mostly are against this proposal, is that you guys are going to accept it. So stand up and say, hey, no, we will, we will go, and we will offset these tenants of the town that are very positive. The last thing I want to highlight is The last thing I want to highlight is, I'm a homeowner in this town. And sorry, I don't think I covered my address, it's 504 Allegheny Street. And I get, I get hit all the time with these very strict regulations on what I can do to my house. I can't build in front of my house. I can't add anything to the front of my house. I can't have seven chickens. But a developer from Texas can come in and build an eight-story tall building. They can put concrete everywhere. And then, they can walk out as a cash grab, just like she said. And all of a sudden, our, the heat goes up in the town, traffic has worsened, all of that. So, my ask to you always, go against what we expect you guys to do. Decline this, or at least, if you're going to accept it, offset these things that they're going to take from us. Build up more pocket parks, build more trees, give us a better tree canopy, get it more bikeable, get it more walkable, and all of these things. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we also get your name? You said-
I'm sorry, Dietrich Lindy. Sorry, child has me a bit distracted.
Thank you.
Dietrich Lindy, 504 Allegheny.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Halsey, and I live at 502 Lee Street. I've been following along with this development since the rezoning conversations began and have listened to several presentations and discussions about the merits of the project. And it felt like the public servants involved in this decision-making are sincerely trying to make the best decisions for the town and are balancing lots of conflicting interests. A little bit about how I move through the world. My education has been in political science and public administration. And I've worked for almost fifteen years in higher education, project management, and strategic planning, which relies a lot on research, data, and deliberation of context. So, that's kind of where I'd like to spend my time tonight, is on context. Context should not only affect the decision being made itself, but will also determine how successful any action is going to be in a continuous feedback loop. So collectively, what would we say makes up our context in March 2025? Certainly, we'd hear things like Virginia Tech and growth, and community. But overwhelmingly, I think we would also hear things like uncertainty, possible recession, trade war, political turbulence. There's arguably no other time in modern history with as much destabilization in the climate as we are right now. And that's not just existential, that's affecting real people. So, this development is geared towards students. What does a reality for students look like right now? The families in Northern Virginia who we think are going to be able to pay the $1,500 for a bedroom in this development, a lot of them just got laid off over the past month and are also having to make hard decisions about what comes next for their families. Other students who are taking out loans to attend Virginia Tech are now listening to the news about the dismantling of the Department of Education, the main lender of student loans, and don't know what that means for their financial aid. As budgets for research are being gutted and existing awards are being revoked, the downstream effect on people, their jobs, and our institutions are going to be massive, and we just don't know what that looks like yet. The truth is that the very structures we've built over decades to support higher ed and research, the main engine of our regional economy, are shifting in such a way that we don't even know what the next three weeks are going to look like, let alone the three years after this is built. Public-private partnerships like this are absolutely how projects should be developed in the future. But there's serious problems with this proposal that show a lack of responsiveness from this developer. First, there's been a clear concern from the community over the parking ratio. I heard about the potential remedies the neighborhood could take. But the easiest one is that they just include more parking. And they could do that. But they won't because it's going to eat into their margin. Second, there's not nearly enough commercial space in this proposal to serve the 759 students that are going to be there without requiring enough space for them to have a car to get where they need to go, to get their food, to get their things. And the third, the concern about the setback in height of the building. They've heard that concern from us and from several of y'all and haven't done anything about that. Partners are supposed to be responsive to feedback. These developers have not heard us, but I hope that you will.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Beth Kelsey. I live at 714 Behringer Drive in McBride Village. I would like to mention that I'm a lifelong resident of Blacksburg. I'm fifty-seven years old, so I've been here for fifty-seven years. I grew up in Westover Hills. I have owned a home in McBride Village since 1989. I am here to plead McBride Village's case. We are surrounded by the Edge, the Hub, the Union apartment buildings. And this would be another great big tall building right around us to hem us in. Also, the apartment complex on Plantation Road. All of the traffic hems us in, coming in on Prisas Fork Road. I'm concerned about the traffic at the intersection of Tom's Creek and Prisas Fork. That's a really long intersection. And we can't use McBride Drive. We have to get out of the neighborhood. We have to go up to Tom's Creek. And with this addition, with the path that the developer mentioned, I think that's going to crowd us more. Also, there are, I've observed over the years, really big crowds at the North Main Food Lion and the University City Boulevard Kroger. And with additional 700-plus folks needing to use the grocery store. I don't feel like our neighborhood has enough services to accommodate this new development. I feel like I have, I'm a graduate of Virginia Tech. I feel like I have personally and professionally benefited from the growth at Virginia Tech and the growth at Blacksburg. So, I'm not anti-growth, I'm speaking up for my neighborhood. And in terms of cost, I would mention that my son, who now lives in Reston, Virginia, at twenty-seven years old, his apartment, a beautiful apartment with all to himself, without roommates, is costing about $1,800. So, we're fast approaching the Northern Virginia prices for young folks living. So, I would urge you to vote against because, or postpone, or find a different location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leanne Walton. I live at 1111 Gulfview Drive. I want to thank all of you that have engaged in conversation with myself and my neighbors over the process of this development. We've really appreciated it. And I have said what I've needed to say via email to most of you. So, I've written a poem inspired by Mary Oliver, and I'm here to embarrass my daughter by reading this. But reading hers brought me some peace through this whole process, just thinking another development, oh my gosh, what are we going to do? So, a plea to the council. It is not the sound and smells of bagels rising that will greet the morning here, but the hum of cars, too many for this small street. Do you hear it, council? The rumble of lives thrust into a thicket of asphalt and towering walls where there once was quiet, once space to breathe? You promise parking, but there will never be enough. Too many students, too few spaces, and the streets will buckle under the weight of your decision. Do you see them, the families who live in the shadow of your vote? Their homes, their peace, their very rhythm interrupted? For what, a developer who is easy to please, but whose gaze never touches the soil beneath our feet? You speak of growth, but I ask, growth for whom? For those who build and move on, or for those who call this town home and wake to the seasons, who watch the trees and know the quiet joys of space and light? Do you see us, the voice of citizens echoing across the land, soft but steady as your spring break decision looms? Will you listen to the ones who cannot be here? The ones whose voices are silenced by schedules and springtime plans? We are not against the students. No, we are for them. We want them to thrive, to learn, to grow. But must it be at the cost of our own peace, our own livability? Virginia Tech's growth will slow as the world slows, as economies change, as politics shift. But this town, this place we call home, will remain if you let it. Will you stand with us, the ones who have lived here long and hear our plea before the towers rise and the streets fill and the light dims and the faces of those who love this town? As it was, as it is, as it should be. Do not let the easy promises blind you. Do not let the weight of one vote, one moment, hold the shape of our town forever. The structure is too dense and does not align with the neighborhood that it is being proposed in. So, please, they know. And not right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
My name is Jean Cobb, and I live at 306 Ekin Street. I've lived in that address for nearly thirty years now. And, you know, in the Mountain View neighborhood. And seen a lot of changes here. I came here in the seventies as a student, and I'm a Virginia Tech retiree. So, I've seen a lot of changes, and the town is continuing to evolve. But we have to be smart about how we do that. I have two main points about the proposal the town is considering now. The town of Blacksburg should not be assuming the responsibility of providing housing for Virginia Tech students. One of the supporting documents that I read on the town website stated that ideally, Virginia Tech should provide adequate housing for students. The fact that they don't doesn't mean the town has to fill the gap. It would be a shame to use this prime location, near our downtown, for yet another student apartment building. And including businesses and multifamily space does not change the essential character of this building. My second point, we already have a traffic problem in Blacksburg. Any of us who live in the downtown are keenly aware of it. One of the rezoning narratives on the town website states that this is likely, it's likely that the students of the 202-unit building will walk and bike to campus. And it's just, it's a huge unfounded assumption. And we know from past experience, it's highly unlikely, in fact, that the majority will do that. And it, again, other people have pointed out, they're still going to be driving for groceries, for outdoor recreation, for all the other activities, you know, as they should be. But it's going to be funneling more traffic through our downtown. And this really does increase the danger for pedestrians, bikes, mopeds, skateboards, all forms of transportation in town. It's already dangerous, so this is not going to help anything. The volume of traffic in that place, I can't imagine it could do anything but increase it. So, I don't believe the scale or the location of this project are appropriate. And I would urge you to oppose it.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Oh, sorry.
It's fine to have somebody queued up. If you want to sit closer, that's good. That saves time. Thank you.
My name is Brian Wheeler. I reside at 509 Stonegate Drive. And like many people here, I have three primary concerns with this development. Scope of the project, 750 beds is just too many for this area. Second, the lack of adequate parking. A .5 parking ratio is simply inadequate. And the impact on traffic in this area, I can't believe that there's no suggested changes in what needs to be done. First, let me address the parking. When Christmas break ended, I've had the same car parked in front of my mailbox until spring break started. The wealthy kids from Northern Virginia are going to come down here, they're going to fill up our parking spaces and fill up our areas. And then, they're just going to leave. And they're going to leave their cars there. And then, the Edge, a lot of people talk about, well, there's empty spaces at the Edge. I live in this neighborhood, that parking lot fills up all the time. On parents' weekends, on game days. They're not going to provide any adequate parking or any additional parking for this space. And one thing the developer fails to mention is the millions and millions of dollars they're saving by shortchanging us on the parking and making it our problem and not theirs. Secondly, I use Cambridge Street to get onto Main Street. And I'm telling you, that intersection is already problematic. If you're going to put an eight-story building there with several hundred more people and bikes and everything else, that nothing needs to be done as part of this project to address where Cambridge Street meets Main Street seems absurd to me. And then, finally, 750 beds on two acres. It's just, it's too many, it's just too many.
Thank you.
My name's Ronnie Collins. I live at 106 Lucas Drive. I'm hearing that this is a student housing. If that's the case, that is a Virginia Tech problem, not a town of Blacksburg, not a town of Blacksburg resident problem. We're already dealing with issues over off of North Main Street. At any given time, you go down Lucas Street, there's cars parked everywhere. And there's signs, there's just no parking, but yet, there they are. They just built a brand-new apartment building behind us about two years ago. We're either dealing with their visitors parking in our parking or their door dash that decides, hey, we're just going to park right in the middle of your driveway. And that's not including the kids that come through there just walking in front of you. Don't even matter, you know, you're in a 5,000-pound vehicle. Traffic? I leave for work at around 0700. I get home about around 1800. It doesn't matter. At seven o'clock in the morning, it's brutal. And it takes about fifteen minutes from getting off of 460 to the house. But if you look at its GPS, it's only eight minutes. You have kids that don't pay attention. They're like this. And you want to put a 759-bedroom house there? We already got an issue on North Main Street and probably all over the town. Bad idea. Again, this is a Virginia Tech problem, not ours. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? And if anyone wants to come forward so that they're queued up to speak next, that's good, too.
Hey there, folks. I'm Carl Fossam, I live at 370 New Kent Road. And I hope to give you guys kind of a unique perspective on this. So, I'm a graduate student here. I also don't have a car. So, I know ostensibly, I'm like the perfect, you know, tenant for you folks. But I definitely would not willingly choose to live here if I could help it. As a graduate student, I only really have time for two things, going to class and getting food. And I see that as kind of a big issue with this development. In regards to getting food, this development is kind of perfectly split, where it's about a thirty-minute walk to either the UCB Kroger or to the Food Lion, which, you know, it's a long, that's a long ways for somebody like me. I have a wife, you know, we've got to get a lot of stuff, a lot of food for that. And I don't have a car, so I'm going to be relying on taking the bus or walking. And there is a single bus stop at this place for 700 students. And I'm not sure if you guys have ever tried to take the bus in that area of town before. But it is oftentimes full. So, it is, you know, the public transportation, I don't think, is adequate for that area. And I would not want to live there because it is far away from the places I need to be on campus and from the other things I need to get in town. So, you know, think about the Union. It's right next to that Kroger, really easy for me to come and go. Even for like the Hub, it's pretty close to, I guess, kind of both the Kroger and the Food Lion. This location, I just, it would definitely not be someplace I would want to live. And I would be concerned that other students would feel the same way as me, might not want to live there. Or if they do, we're going to have, you know, a congestion problem in that area of town with people trying to walk, people trying to get on the one bus that happens to go by the building right there. So, I would just ask you guys, you know, reconsider this, perhaps. Either vote no or reconsider. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me today.
Thank you. Who will speak next?
My name is Pete Macedo. I live at 502 Lee Street. And I've spoken with pretty much all of you on this issue. And you've all listened to me. And you've listened to all these people here. I've been in people's homes where you've come and talked to us. Been standing out in the rain with me, talking about this program, two hours in a meeting room, a great meal at El Rodeo. You first got to eat at the pub, so that's, I guess, a bonus on me. And like hour-and-a-half conversation in the car while I'm driving to Texas about this. And multiple times, everybody's been reaching out about this. So, I'm really asking that you continue to listen. And the thing I want you to listen to is, Blacksburg is hard, and Blacksburg is different. Blacksburg is not, let me get my list. It is not Austin, Texas, Athens, Georgia, Gainesville, Florida, Atlanta, Georgia, Columbus, Ohio, Tempe, Arizona, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Lafayette, West Lafayette, Indiana, College Park, Maryland, or College Station. How many of those were state capitals, those college towns? We're in a college town, largest town in the state, I think, used to be at least, definitely on football weekends. And we have our own issues that we deal with here that are unique, and we all know this. And you know some of it, and you know more of it because you talk to us, and you listen to us, and you incorporate that into your decisions, because none of us know everything about this town. But we have to work together on this. Because I think this is a great project. It's a great design. I don't want you to think that I'm trashing what you guys do, but it's not a town project. It's a city project. It would be great in a town that had lots of grocery delivery options, or food delivery options, or transit, or just resources all around them. You have 259 people in that one building, and why is nobody remembering that there's like another 30 units across the street? There's over 800 people in this spot. And where are they going to shop? Where are they going to go? You're expecting that their life is go to bed, go to class, go downtown, and that's it. We're not all these places. We're not even Virginia Tech. We're Blacksburg. You're Blacksburg. We're Blacksburg. I would love to have a great development project from these guys in Blacksburg, but this one doesn't fit here. We're Blacksburg, so let's keep it that way. And I know, things will never be the same in Blacksburg, you know? But there are some things that we can keep, and it's your job to decide that. What we keep and what we change. It's my job to wake up at 2:00 in the morning today, tonight, no, tomorrow, and bake the heck out of bagels with a lot of the folks that support me here. That's my job, and I hope that you continue to do your job, listening to us and incorporating our information in your decision.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Hello, members of Town Council. My name is Steve Gladdy. I live at, where do I live? 201 Fairfax Road down on South Main, so I'm not in this neighborhood. A lot of you are familiar with me. I've been here before. I've spoken to you individually. I know you, over the years, have helped elect some of you and reelect some of you. I really, really want to emphasize that I appreciate all of the work and the level of commitment that you show to these sorts of projects over and over and over again. I wish that it were the case that we could just say, this is a Virginia Tech problem. It's not a Blacksburg problem. Over the years, I mean, almost everything that you do, good and bad, is a reflection of what people who were not elected by us have decided at Virginia Tech. So I'm, I'm definitely sympathetic to the, the spot that you're in, over and over again, about this housing crisis, particularly lately. And I, I've seen a lot of the commentary. I've spoken with a lot of the people. But it is the case that not all of them are, you know, can be dismissed. These concerns should not be dismissed out of hand as, you know, simply not in my neighborhood sorts of things. I've seen, I've talked to people, you've talked to people. I think some of the concerns that they've raised are thoughtful. They pretty much said all the things that I wanted to say. But one of the things that I, that I haven't seen addressed is the precedent that it sets for a building that high in that particular location. And so a lot of the criticisms that I see, particularly online, are people who are nostalgic for the Blacksburg that was, no matter when it was that they got here. And everybody has their own little preferred time period. They think Blacksburg was the best. And your job is to be attentive to that sort of thing and preserve, you know, what we generally call quality of life, I think. But your orientation should be the future. You have to look out. You have to look ahead. There's going to be change, and the idea is how to mitigate it. And I think you all realize that and take it seriously. So that many people, in that particular location, with that height, is problematic. I do think that we definitely need more affordable housing. And I'm glad that they're going to put some money in for affordable housing in other locations. But I would appreciate it if you all would delay a decision on this, to get more input from the community, particularly about the traffic problems that they've raised. I'm not convinced, from what I've heard, that, you know, a lot of the problems that they're raising have been, have been addressed. And finally, I want to say that I am not here speaking on behalf of the New River Valley Greens. The Greens did not have consensus yet on this, but I'm sure we will. So I'm just here for myself. Thank you for all of your hard work and your attentiveness and your willingness to listen. I think you should take the time to listen some more before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
My name is Kimberly Homer. I live at 222 Price Street. Facts are out of fashion these days, so I'm going to state some opinions. In my opinion, this project is a threat to Blacksburg Bagels, which is a true gem and that makes Blacksburg a special place. In my opinion, the failure of the stormwater infrastructure, making this property challenging to develop, is not a developer's place to solve. In my opinion, it makes no sense to put an eight-story building with 759 humans, putting out an additional 700,000 gallons of effluent a day in a floodplain. In my opinion, it makes no sense to build more student housing when undergrad enrollment has only increased by 1,500 students since 2020, and is on the way down, by the way. The yields are consistently down. People at Harvard are getting laid off. I don't think Virginia Tech is better than Harvard. Higher ed is going down. We should not be building a big stranded asset. Hope to us or make our town better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How are y'all? I'd like to say, well, my name is Shannon Slusser, and I'm at Stevie Green Drive. I'd like to, to reemphasize everything that everybody has said. I don't think that Blacksburg is a place for high-density housing at all. High-density is, I don't think that's good for us as humans to be stuffed in like a sardine. I don't think that that's very Blacksburg anyway. I don't think that that's, we don't need high-density here. And if we want to have a solution for housing, then, then why are we building a hotel at the old middle school property? That would be a perfect place for some housing, but I found out that that is, is that nine stories?
I, I haven't seen the latest proposal.
Approved was not nine stories.
No, we, we did not approve nine stories.
Okay, good.
And there is housing already built, so this, the parcel in the front is the last thing to be built.
And there's two hotels, is that correct?
I, I don't know, but go ahead with your comments. This is your turn.
Well, I mean, you know, it's two, it's two hotels, and we're, we're focusing on, on housing, and we're building two hotels in downtown Blacksburg, which is perfectly walkable to town, to Kroger, to Tech. And so that would be more suited for an actual housing development rather than hotel. And I, I do not want to live in a studentville. I don't want to have any more time added to my travel from South Main to North Main or Price's Fork. It takes me about a half hour, as is, 20 to 25, 30 minutes, to get from South Main to Price's Fork and, and Heathwood. It's, that's just insanity. I, I feel like this has all been pushed through as well. Everybody that I talk to doesn't even know that this project is going on. So they don't even, they're not even aware of it, a lot of people that I've spoken to. What, and, and we have a cap, is that correct, at four stories?
It, it depends on what part of town. I think your time is coming to an end, so complete your thoughts.
Well, we, if, if we're going to increase everything to eight stories, then that really needs to be something that is chewed over, more so than, than just five months for the community to try to digest this, because this isn't long enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Seeing no one, I think we'll go on to the next portion of this public hearing. And that is... Yeah, the, this is when the applicant can respond to some of the questions that have been raised.
Thank you. Excuse me. I hope I did justice by listening to all this, actually a very good group of speakers here. I'm going to try to highlight the concerns as I heard them. Location was, I think, the number-one concern I heard. As far as we understand, this was decided on a while ago now. It's been several years. The decision, the precedent for a building in that particular location has been a plan that has been unrealized. So the location, I, I really don't know how to respond to that other than this seems to be the most appropriate location in terms of everything that we've talked about: walkability, convenience, connectivity. There was another very large concern about traffic, and I'm very interested to bring this up because per staff's concern, traffic had to be solved before we were even able to file an application. So we have gone through the process of studying, reviewing, taking in staff comments, re-reviewing, making changes, resubmitting. We did this in an effort to make sure that this was not going to cause a problem of this magnitude of traffic. We were able to get that approval. It had been signed off, and no warrants for improvements on any of the surrounding properties, or, sorry, any of the surrounding intersections. And I think it was a, it was one of the larger studies I've seen, like 16 to 18 different intersections around the, around the development. From our experience, the, you know, there was, I think, one bus stop mentioned. There's actually multiple stops that come by, and within less than five minutes, you can basically get transit to Christianburg, to Roanoke, anyplace else you need to be. Shopping was a very interesting one. And I don't disagree, having done grocery shopping on a bus before, actually for a number of years of my life, done it on my bike with a backpack. Was feeling much stronger then, wouldn't do that now. What we're seeing in all of our developments across the country, we're growing package rooms. Not only are we growing package rooms, we're placing refrigerators in there. We're placing warming stations in there. Because, yes, students don't necessarily trek out to get everything they need at a grocery store. They order a lot of stuff in, and we're seeing that everywhere. Parking. Now, first off, I think there was a solution, you know, mentioned at the beginning by Mr. Verneil about how neighborhoods can deal with that. But aside from that, a .5 parking ratio managed by the right group is not only feasible, but can be done successfully. Our management team has worked in many different markets, but has also worked in Blacksburg market under other flags. And they have confirmed with us, yes, this is something that we can do. We can bring incentives to people who want to bring a car, but we're out of parking. We have peer-to-peer connections. We have digital interviews. We present the foundation of why it's better to live in Blacksburg without a car versus trying to, trying to park every car that might come into town. What we are trying to do, however, is make sure that if we go above somehow this .5 for car storage, we are finding places for our tenants elsewhere in town for long-term storage. And I know that happens now. I don't see any reason why it couldn't happen with this development. There was the mention of prices. I, I would just simply say, the answer to prices is supply. The greater the supply, the more the housing market is able to work itself out. I did catch the cash grab and leave, so I just want to reiterate one more time. We develop, we build, we own, and we hold long-term. We manage our own properties. So we're responsible for our own reputation in different markets. A little more just on the parking notes, because I, I just want to make sure we're doing, I'm doing this, you know, proper justice. Not only does reduced parking reduce traffic pollution and increase ridership, but you guys are in the, I'm in the presence of an award-winning transit system. It stops at our front door. I, it, it seems very logical to me there. National and regional trends have been steadily seeing, steadily moving in this direction. University-adjacent trends are seeing a far greater reduction than 50%. We're seeing 0% in a lot of these places because there are a reduction of single-vehicle drivers in the student demographic.
Mark, is the, is the stoplight for him?
Yes.
Oh, I only have time? Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So that is the applicant rebuttal, and I want to ask, do we want action? We're going to do them separately, right?
Correct, yes.
So what is council's pleasure to do with ordinance 2062, the main rezoning? And when we find out whether we have a motion, then we will have a conversation.
Mayor, I move that we take a 10-minute recess to consider the public comment that we received, if that's all right, before we move on to a motion on the agenda item.
Taking a recess at a point like this is awkward because I don't know how council's going to consider that. So we, we had a public recess years ago that, that we were criticized for.
That went badly, yeah.
In that case, withdrawing.
Thank you. What is council's pleasure on this first ordinance 2062?
I move approval of ordinance 2062.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And now I want to have a conversation and comments. Liam, I think you've been well organized. Do you want to get started?
Yeah, sure. I don't mind starting. I've spoken with many of you that are here in this room and have talked with you in a number of contexts. Peter, thanks again for coming to my house. I'm still so bummed you didn't bring me some bagels or something. Then I would happily accept that kind of bribe. I, I accept... I, I accept and acknowledge the concerns about parking. Of course, I live at 804 Progress Street, which is just a stone's throw from the edge of this building. In fact, I'd wager that I'm probably, maybe with the exception of Peter's bagel shop, the one who's closest to this development in this room right now. And so, of course, I deal with parking issues all the time. I've had a Maryland license plate parked in front of my driveway for about the last four months, which is frustrating, but I don't own the road. I agree that the traffic circle is messy, as somebody who pretty routinely walks through there in my day-to-day life, it is taking my own life in my own hands crossing at that point. And especially around dark, when it's harder to see, there are some visibility concerns there. And I see that putting, you know, 759 students in that location is going to be an incredible kind of crunch to folks who are trying to, to pass in that area. I also am keenly aware of, of exactly how tall this structure is. I mean, it certainly will kind of blot out the sun on my front porch for the most part. I mean, anytime later than like 5:00 in the afternoon, now that we're past daylight savings time, is going to be in the shadow of this building. And, and I think that we would need to, to make sure that, moving forward, if this is approved, that we are delivering adequate public transportation to that stop, making sure that we're keeping track of ridership trends as we always do with Blacksburg Transit, and making sure that we're giving folks the kinds of, of transport that they need. On a personal note, you know, born and raised in Blacksburg, and so I understand that one of the things that we would be losing with this development is kind of the contours of the old Blacksburg in that part of town. Can't tell you how many times I went to Heaven or Hardware, because my father couldn't find a, a lawnmower blade at Sears, or how many times, you know, we went to the, the Pizza Hut down there after preschool, or how many ex-girlfriends got roses for me from DeRose Florist. So there certainly is that personal connection to that part of town. But being a renter, even a renter right next door, I'm very keenly aware of the problems we have in this town with affordability. Now, these, the units in this building are not by any stretch of the imagination affordable, they are out of my price range. Surely there are some students who can afford them, but I certainly was not one when I was in college. But I, I see my primary purpose on, on this council, or this planet, or just government in general, is to advocate for those who are in need. And so even though these units are not themselves affordable, it will add housing. And building more housing is the panacea to... It is, it is the panacea when we talk about housing costs, especially in a demand-stressed environment like Blacksburg, leaving aside how one feels about Virginia Tech, the university admin, or the students at Virginia Tech who are our constituents too at the end of the day. Having that knowledge that building additional bedrooms will lead to, you know, the alleviation of some of the upward pressures that rents are experiencing in our community, and will hopefully lead to reduced rent inflation. So it's far from, it's far from perfect, and this is one that I've wrestled with, which is why I've spent so much time talking with all of you and trying to understand as many perspectives as possible. And so just know that I share a great deal of your concerns as I wrestle with the housing affordability problem we have here in town.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to this?
I'll add to what Liam said. Reality is, Virginia Tech is growing. We hear about an enrollment cliff, they had another record enrollment in 2018, when we drafted the resolution people have referred to, enrollment was 29,300. Virginia Tech said they would grow incrementally, it is now 31, incoming class in 2024 was 31,35. That's about 1,800 students, at a time when tech is growing incrementally. That would more than fill this building. So yes, Tech, Virginia Tech continues to grow, and this year they received another record number of applications. We don't see a cliff. Yes, we have in the last few weeks some concern about what the landscape is for the research, the research landscape for universities, but we don't really have the capacity to drill that down right now. The more students who come in, if there is not adequate housing, plenty of them can afford $1,500 a room, their parents will buy the house next door and put their kids in there. Not everybody in town would share that opinion. Many people...
Yeah, that's, this, you, you've had your chance to speak during public comment, and this is a time for...
One of the biggest complaints I receive as a councilperson is student lifestyle conflicts with single-family neighborhoods. It is a chronic problem that we have. The more housing we build for students relieves pressure on those neighborhoods in close proximity to the university. That's pretty much a fact. If we do not build in close proximity with the university, and we build lower housing, lower density housing further out, we're getting traffic. There are no easy solutions to the problems that we are facing. Density is inevitable if we're going to solve our housing price, crisis. You think it's not a crisis if you don't have to rent, if you don't have to find rentals. We recently received a study that Virginia Tech is number one in the nation for pre-rental commitments. That's because we have such a shortage of housing that students have to sign up for housing to nine, 10 months in advance. Like, you know, you get here in August, you got to sign up for the next year already, because we have a shortage of housing. This is not a perfect development, I wish it weren't so tall, I wish it weren't so dense, but it is walkable, it is bikeable. This is the solution to our problem, as I see it. I am sympathetic, I've been here for over 30 years, Blacksburg has changed. I grieve the town that I moved to, but it's not locked in amber, and we have to adjust to changing conditions, or we'll lose the town more than we have. We have to manage the realities that we face.
Well, I'll go next. First of all, I want to thank all the folks who came out tonight, and all the folks who emailed us and stopped me on the street, or met me for, in person. I looked back over my emails this afternoon, and, and my figures may not be exact, but I had about 40 distinct people, so 40 different people contact me via email, many of them multiple times. Of those about 40 people, one person sent me, and I think everyone else, I don't know whether to call it a letter or a petition, signed by 33 people opposing this, this proposal. So again, that's 33 people in the McBride Village neighborhood area who signed this. Of all the people who emailed me, I believe only two people emailed in favor of it. And those two folks were graduate students who understandably are looking for, for decent housing. Tonight, if I counted correctly, 14 people spoke, and every single one of them was either an absolute no or, or hold off on this proposal. And so I think we have all heard you. Most people in Blacksburg who have contacted us don't want this project. We know, though, that Blacksburg will grow and it will evolve, it's not going to stay in some kind of inert state. We know students are absolutely essential to Blacksburg's success as, as a place to be. Most of us here in Blacksburg are somehow tied to that community. I came as a grad student and never left, I've lived in Blacksburg since 1980. Many people have the same kind of stories as mine. I do think we're in a housing crisis, I do think that density is absolutely essential for us to survive. But I do not believe that every single housing proposal that comes along, we have to approve. And so I think that's what we're all wrestling with up here. Things that are great about this project are the funds for the workforce housing, that's over a million dollars, that would be an incredible boon to the town. The stormwater improvement, I think, is really good. The location is, to me, appropriate for student housing, I think all those things are great. The trouble, or one of the troubles for me is the parking ratio. I do believe that students will walk from that location or bike from that location to campus if this project is, is approved, I, I have no question about that. But I do believe, in this day and age, us, we being in southwestern Virginia, public transportation outside our community is improving, but it's not there yet, right? It is not there yet. So I think most of our students do come, and the more affluent students do come with cars. Your parents want them to be able to get home on weekends, or for their birthdays, or whatever's going to happen. I do think that, again, if a student lived in this proposed development, they would probably walk to campus, but I think that all their cars are not going to fit there, and I think those cars are going to hit the neighborhoods. Yes, we have a permit parking solution, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the neighborhoods are going to welcome that or embrace that. To me, that's a sign of a neighborhood that's struggling, right? If you have to have a parking permit situation. And I understand why the students need to do that. Parking at Virginia Tech is really, really expensive. You know, so of course you're going to park on a public street if you can't park in your apartment building garage. So it's a great place for student housing, but to me, it is just too tall and too dense. I believe tall and dense is the direction we're going to have to go in, I absolutely agree with that. But I think this particular proposal is too doll, too tall and too dense. So I'm going to have to vote against it tonight.
Let's, let's don't do that. Anybody else?
So I appreciate you all here tonight, and I have read every single email that has come in, and my apologies for not responding to all of them, my life's been a little turned upside down with the uncertainty of my husband's federal job. But regardless, I have put a lot of thought into this. I, I am very concerned about the loss of commercial space, the overall height, the density, the parking issues. I really would have liked to have seen the plan for off-site parking already in hand as opposed to the, the idea of off-site parking. I do, I am in favor of the stormwater improvements, the donation to the Affordable Housing Fund, and its location close to campus, and it is ripe for development, but in the end, I just can't get behind the overall height and density right in that spot, and I will be voting no.
I will add a few comments here. First, thanks everyone who came out to speak tonight, whether you came out tonight or emailed us, I've read through all of your emails, I've spoken to many of you, and I appreciate the feedback and the perspective from the neighborhood that you've provided. This is certainly not an easy decision, as you see, we have differences of opinion on this council, as often happens with large, complex rezoning, or any other type of kind of land use decisions. You probably already know I'm going to support this development because I made the motion tonight, but I did want to talk about a few specific things. One is the resolution that we did in 2019 and the appropriateness of this location for student housing. I do think that this is a suitable location for student housing, it is very close to campus, closer to campus than some of the other types of student housing developments that we've seen. In 2019, the resolution passed said that the town council would, quote, "Review, sort and organize housing proposals on a case-by-case basis, determine the merits of the proposal, its consistency with the comprehensive plan, the guidance from development strategies, and how the proposal furthers the town's housing goals." One thing I'd like to point out is the guidance from development strategies, about a year after we did that resolution, as Kenzie mentioned in her staff report, there was a report that was produced by Development Strategies identifying along the North Main corridor, development patterns, and how kind of development should move forward in that area. It identified this area, calling it "The Fork," was the label that it gave this, and identified it was an appropriate area for mixed-use development with student housing. That said, I am uncomfortable with some aspects of the development, even though I'll be voting in favor. One of those is the building height. The building is quite tall, I wish it were just one story shorter. I understand the economic reasons that have factored into the developer's decision to make it that height, the stormwater management is very expensive, and you have to have so many units to be able to construct it in the first place, but I'm still uncomfortable with that height. I don't know what the correct parking ratio should be, I know that, I do think the developments that are close to our downtown are close to Virginia Tech's campus. The 1.1 spaces per bedroom is quite high, I do believe that that's something we should lower, something we should probably talk about further as a part of our larger review of zoning in the town of Blacksburg. I don't know what the correct answer is on what the parking ratio should be, but I hope that if there are impacts in the neighborhoods, that the neighbors will pursue some of the remedies that we talked about tonight with permit parking, that sort of thing. It's been many years since we've had kind of a large student housing development that the town council has considered for a variety of reasons. One of those reasons was actually probably the resolution that we passed in 2019. So we've had a little bit of a breather from these discussions, which I think is good, but we do still have many housing challenges that our community is facing. And although this is certainly not a perfect development or a perfect proposal, I do think it will help alleviate some of those housing challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry?
So I'm the liaison to the Planning Commission, so I already got to vote on this one time. And in that Planning Commission meeting, I stated that my concerns were the, the height, the density, and the parking. I was also very concerned with the setbacks of this building and the stepbacks of the building. These are two terms, two items, that we up here are continuing to struggle with when we consider some other zoning. The importance of those are that when we do hire buildings, those two things, the stepback of the building and the setback, help soften the building, they help it relate to the street, the massing of it, it doesn't feel as massive, and that's very important when we consider height moving forward. So I did not support it at Planning Commission. The applicant heard my message that night. I'm a little hurt that my quotes weren't up there with my colleagues, but I understand. So, and one thing that I, I want to, I failed to say, but thank you for everyone that came out tonight, thanks, thanks to everyone that emailed, it's important to me, it's important to all of us to get the input. And then I want to thank staff for what they did, because this has been very complicated with the stormwater in particular. And then the applicant, both, I know they've struggled a lot through the administrative process of this, excuse me, and they did address a little bit of what I was concerned about. Since the Planning Commission meeting, I read a book called "Paved Paradise." One of my other colleagues has read it and/or skimmed it, and that softened a little bit my feel about the, the parking issue, I wasn't quite as upset about that. But it really came down to me for the height. As my colleague Michael said, and I think Susan feels that way, and Lauren as well, if, if this had been one, one story taller, I think we would have had a much different vote tonight, I think a lot more people would have been able to get behind it.
Shorter.
Shorter, sorry, sorry.
We know, we know what you meant.
Daylight savings week. And, but for me, also, bringing the height down one story, that would have taken care of some of the density and the parking as well. I mean, to me, it was, it was an easy solution to my concerns. So, so those, those are still my concerns. I do want to point out, as, as some folks said up here, that, you know, our comp plan we modified, and this was an area that was determined for student housing, so the location's a good location for this, as well as the North Main study. Another thing is, we get these PRDs, these planned residential, and they're normally asking for height and density. And in the ordinance, it states you give flexibility and you give that, and one of the reasons you may do that is because of the struggles with the site. Maybe for here in our community, we have lots of hills and valleys, and that creates a development. So I do want to point out that another reason that the PRD makes sense here, and maybe some additional height makes sense, is the stormwater is a big issue there, and that's an increased cost that, that, you know, we need to acknowledge, that's the truth. So as you can see, like everyone else, there's a lot of good things about this and a lot of bad things. I live on the north side of town, so I drive Main Street, I bicycle it, I walk it, so I, I see this, this corridor, I know its strengths, I know its weaknesses. So I hear what people are saying and what their concerns are, because they will be my concerns as I drive by, by anything that occurs there. But despite the back and forth, I haven't seen enough to make me feel that I need to change my vote, so I, I will not support it tonight.
Thank you. I will go ahead and wrap up, and my comments are not, I, I feel like my colleagues have done such an obviously thoughtful job of analyzing this project. I, I won't be... I, I won't be redundant, I hope, of all the things that they've had to say. But I've jotted myself some notes, a bit scattered, on some of the topics that have come up and percolated up through the public dialogue, and some of the things that my colleagues have said. And I want to express my appreciation also for everyone who has come out and participated in the public process and learned more about it, or if you knew all about it before, just thank you for participating, it's, it is critical. And you can see what a struggle this has been for most of us. So, where to begin? I think, I, I'll begin where it began, about 10 years ago. Virginia Tech announced to all who would listen to them in 2014 that their intention was to grow. And I, I appreciate President Sands, and he and I do meet on a regular basis, and I have an op, I've had an opportunity to ask him exactly, how does that work? You know, can it be, what is the business model behind the idea that you want to be between 30,000 and 50,000 students? And he told me that it was not a business model, it was that there was a wish to be part of that top tier of land-grant institutions. And so when they announced that in 2014, all of us assembled in this room had an opportunity to learn more about that and to respond to it if we didn't like that goal. And my friends, and my neighbors, and my relatives who work at Virginia Tech are disinclined to quibble with their overlords on campus. And so now, here we are, 10 years later, and Virginia Tech has grown over 20%, and they told us they would, and we are not gonna be able to fix it on the back end here in council chambers. That, that is my first reflection. Many people have said that we don't, Virginia Tech's problems are not our problems, let them deal with it themselves. Well, that's an interesting, you know, thing to posit. I think when we wrote our resolution in 2019, it was an attempt to put them on notice that we're tapping the brakes, and we are not gonna look with great favor on large student housing, purpose-built housing apartments. And so indeed, we have not approved any for five years. And consequently, we have a situation that Susan Mattingly referred to, and that is, just last month, there was a, do you remember the name of it? Is it Matrix that comes out with that report?
I think so. Yardi Matrix Studies.
Yardi Matrix. We are now number one in the country for, for our low, low vacancy rate. It's unhealthy. There is a healthy vacancy rate that, that supports the health of any rental market. And students here come, and they, as, as Susan mentioned, you know, they, they sign up for the very first apartment, and two months later, they're forced to sign up again for a year later. And the only reason the apartment council can get away with that is because there are not enough apartments. A philosophical question is, I've heard several people say, "We don't want to build housing for students." The philosophical question is, are they not residents? They're, 2/3 of our population is students. And I, I heard somebody say that they don't want to live in a studentville, but, I mean, you should have moved away years ago if you felt that way. It has only gotten more and more disproportionate. This is where we live. This is the town that we love, and it's 2/3 students. I heard some people say that they don't want all these extra students, they don't want the additional students in this location. Again, this is a, has been part of a conversation I've had with President Sands. He told me that the university has done a zip code study, and they have discovered that in spite of how crowded our neighborhoods are, how hard it is to find student housing, how students are gouged for rent, in spite of that, almost all their students live in the 24060 zip code. So they are choosing not to travel as far as Pulaski or Christiansburg, there, where there was a, excuse me, a great deal more housing than there is here in town. So these students that will move to that corner, they're not extra students, they're the students that are living with us now. It will be a different location for them. I think I'm gonna say something bruising when I talk about the profit motive. I won't ask you for a show of hands, but for yourselves, answer for yourselves, how many of you live in a, in a house or an apartment that was built by a hobbyist? Some people do. Some people will actually, you know, get the log cabin kit, and they build their own house. And I heard recently that nationally, something just under 10% of people do live in housing that is subsidized with public funding. But almost every one of us will go home tonight to a house or an apartment that was built for profit. So I think we really need to put that aside. We really need to put that aside. Generally speaking, what I look at, when I look at any project, I try to pull out, and I ask myself these questions. What is realistic to expect here? If we have a $3 million stormwater problem, I mean, we think, we think of that as the corner of Winston and Progress. It's actually the confluence of the Webb Branch and Strubel's Creek. What is realistic to expect there if you start with a $3 million stormwater problem? What are the merits and the minuses of the proposal? Without considering personal considerations, like, "We don't like people from Texas," or "We don't like people who make profits." Okay, take that out, and what are the merits and minuses? And I feel like everyone here has thought about it very carefully, including the people on council. What is the realistic alternative? What is the alternative? Several people said that they would like to have something lower, I understand that. I think the character of an eight-story building is a lot like the character of a seven-story building, personally. One thing that has been persuasive to me is that this is in such a low spot, it not only floods chronically, it will put that building down much lower than some other ones, like the Turner Street building right across the street from it. And then my final consideration when I look at any project is, what, what is best for all? What is best for all of us, not just some of us? So I'll leave it at that, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll. Ford?
No. Aye.
Hager Smith? Hager Smith? Aye. Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Nay.
Oliver?
Nay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, we, there's two other portions to this, and I'll give you, I'll give you a minute. We will move on now to action on Ordinance 2063, item B.
I move approval of Ordinance 2063.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll on Ordinance 2063? Hager Smith? Aye. Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Nay.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
And action on Resolution 3E25.
I move that we approve Resolution 3E25.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Nay.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hager Smith? Aye. Thank you all. We are moving on now, and the Resolution 3F25 grants conditional, a conditional use permit for lighting at a public park or field on Tom's Creek Road. And we'll start with the staff presentation.
Caroline Collins will have the staff presentation.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'll be speaking to the conditional use permit 24-4, lighting at a public park or field. The applicant is Dean Crane on behalf of the property owner of the town of Blacksburg, and this property is located at 2100 Tom's Creek Road, and it's approximately 9.33 acres, and is Zoned Rural Residential 1. Some existing conditions here at the site, the topography, so the parcel is elevated above Tom's Creek Road, however, it does sit below the surrounding parcels, creating a sort of bowl shape. The amenities include a parking lot, playground, picnic shelter, a dog park, restrooms, and a softball field, which is where the lights in question are located. Current operations, so there are year-round activities at the park, however, there's a stronger emphasis on the spring, summer, and fall seasons. Events do typically conclude by 10:00 p.m. with lights shutting off at 10:30 p.m., and this park is available for public as well as private leagues. And here you can see an aerial photograph of the subject area outlined in blue. A little bit of an overview of the request, so currently, there are six light poles that stand at 53 feet tall. It is some outdated technology, so we do see a little bit of light spillage as well as dark spots, which can contribute to player safety concerns. And there are six proposed light poles as well, which would go into the exact same locations where the current poles are. They would use newer LED technology with directional shielding capabilities, and what that means is that the applicant would be able to direct the light exactly where they'd like it, thus reducing the light spillage and dark spots, so increasing player safety in the end. Here you can see on the left a diagram of the proposed light poles, where you can see the shielding I had mentioned before, and on the right is an image of the field with the six lights, three in the infield and three in the outfield. So for district purpose and definitions, the main purpose for the Rural Residential 1 district is to develop at a scale that's intended to preserve the rural character of the district. And then the definition for lighting public park, excuse me, lighting public park and recreation area field can be seen here, as well as in Section 2103 of the Town Zoning Ordinance. And then Section 4320, this is the section of the zoning ordinance that grants the applicant the ability to apply for conditional use permit for lighting at a public park or field. And it also comes with its own set of general standards that the applicant would need to meet if this was approved. And here you can see an image of the current zoning map with the subject parcel outlined in blue, and it is Zoned Rural Residential 1, as I had mentioned before, surrounded by Rural Residential 1 with a planned residential development to the south. And community character principles, or CCPs, are found within the town's conference of plan, and these are meant to guide the town's development. And the applicable CCPs for this application is CCP 19, creation of public and private parks and recreation amenities, both for active and passive uses, is an important part of land use development decisions. And staff concluded that this lighting would improve safety for recreational sports within town, and the proposed upgrades will make the park more accessible to wider range of users. And second, CCP 21, the town is committed to minimizing light pollution by adhering to the International Dark Sky Association standards, and the proposed replacement of existing lights with LED lights will increase energy efficiency, as well as reduce light spillage through the new directional capabilities that these lights would provide. However, these taller light poles may be more visible to more surrounding properties, so council may wish to consider this when evaluating potential impacts. And within the Conference of Plan, you can find the future land use map, which designates this parcel as parkland, open space, and resource protection. The specific uses are governed by the implementing zoning district, however, with this conditional use permit, there is no proposed change in use, just the height of the light poles. And lighting at a public park or field is permitted by a CUP in all districts per Section 4320. And here you can see a map of the future land use, with the subject parcel outlined in blue, shown as parkland, and the surrounding parcels being shown as very low-density residential. And the use and design standards in Section 4320 are as follows. One, no public park and recreation area field lighting shall be located in a buffer yard. The current and proposed lighting is not in a buffer yard, so the applicant does meet the standard. Two, large evergreen trees and other screening shall be required in appropriate locations. The applicant has proposed screening along a current gapo screening in a section that fronts Tom's Creek Road, so they do plan to meet the standard as well. And three, light sources shall not cast excessive light upon adjacent property or rights away. The proposed lighting does meet the required limits, and there is no proposed excessive light spillage. And lastly, the zoning administrator may require the applicant to submit a report from a professional lighting engineer, and the applicant has submitted a photometric plan. And you can see here, this is just an image from one of the pages of the photometric plan that was submitted, and this one here shows the perimeter of where there would be no light spillage. And potential adverse impact, so with lighting, these 60-foot poles will increase visibility to more surrounding properties and neighbors, however, this is, this does not mean that we'll necessarily see more light spillage, just that the light and the poles themselves would be visible from further away. And hours of operation, so there's no proposed change in hours of operation, however, with these improved lighting conditions, we may see an increase of events being held at this park. And with public utilities, transportation, and waste management, there's no proposed changes nor proposed impacts. And with staff recommended conditions, so there were two staff recommended conditions, and these were, all lighting installation shall conform to the photometric plan dated December 26, 2024, and two, the applicant shall install and maintain the lighting fixtures as specified in the application submitted November 27, 2024. And lastly, the Planning Commission held their public hearing on February 4, 2025, and they voted to recommend approval of this conditional use permit with staff recommended conditions, 7-0 with two absent. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have for staff.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Thank you. We have an applicant statement.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. If I do start to cough, I'm sorry, I'm getting over the flu. My name is Dean Crane, I'm the Parks and Recreation Director, and this is Tom's Creek, and every field that we would try to do a lighting project has its own separate CUP, so it's only for Tom's Creek tonight.
Oops. Okay, thanks.
My apologies.
Let me just see if I can do it. There we go.
Yeah. All right. There we go. Town Council, why are we doing this? One, it is a town council goal to improve the town park amenities. We did a 2024 Facility and Amenities Report, and a citizen said they wanted more lighting on our two fields, and we currently have two right now. And to improve the lighting is a stated goal in our 2008 Master Plan for Parks and Recreation. Why are we doing this? It's to create more time and better operations for the working adult, as well as for the children in the fall seasons. We program approximately 1,000 hours at that field. We only have two lit fields in our total inventory. Currently, the lights are so old, technology-wise, they're very difficult to serve, and better lighting would increase the player's safety, and that's what our main goal is. Their current poles are at least 40 years old, though they could be older, and better technology means better lighting concentration and less spread outside the plain area. So this is the current pole right now, it is 53 feet, four inches, we are asking to go to 60. Once again, these are the current six poles that we have, and we're planning to keep them in the same location. And I went out on one of the evenings with a light detector to make sure that we actually had the light candles, and as you can see, 16, 12, very low-lit areas. One of the issues that was brought up in the public meeting, as well as with Planning Commission, was something called skip glare. As you can see, it was when it was icy out, you can see reflection off of the ice, but a very little reflection off of the grass. As it says, water, streets, anything that is a hard surface, you get a bounce, things that are rougher in grass edges or anything of that nature, has very little bounce back that are rougher in grass edges or anything of that nature, has very little bounce back up into the, into the sky. This is our photometric scheme that we have, and if you can see better than I can, you see those numbers are 20, 30, 50 light candles per area. So you're talking a very concentrated, well-lit field for safety. You see with the little circle that we have, the orange circle, that is the area that we propose that we will re-screen. Currently, there are none. When we went to planning commission, we weren't going to do that because we didn't know if there were underground lines there. We did have missed utility out, it is feasible for us to plant, and we will plant as part of our project. We do have a guarantee from the company that is a 25-year guarantee. And one of the things, you saw this design already, I just want to let you know, the design with the shield there is designed to meet the community-friendly sports lighting program that was actually created by the Dark Sky International, so we want to adhere to that as well. There will be a savings every year on this by using LED lights compared to the old technology we have. And lastly, you can see the bottom picture is a pretty typical, not our facility currently, but that's kind of the glare you would get, and up top, you can see with the shields how concentrated the light is. Happy to answer any questions. Also, these lights are very similar to the lights that are at the Huckleberry Trail Park in Christiansburg, though we are asking for six, not as many. Happy to answer any questions if you do.
I just had a logistics question. If this is approved tonight, how fast are you guys going to be able to do this change out?
It's approximately a four-to-six-month process of building, not the construction on-site, but it would be fall, in time for the lighting situation to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
This is when we open it to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak against lighting?
Or for lighting.
Or for lighting, yeah. Okay, seeing none. And we've got no rebuttal. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of resolution 3F25.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the, what?
Maybe I was looking in a way that you had no public comment, right? You went through that?
Did we have?
Yeah, no one spoke, yeah.
Okay.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Moving on to ordinance 2068, rezoning 1.5 acres of land at 402 Clay Street from R5 Transitional Residential to Planned Residential Zoning.
Matthew Sampa has the staff report.
This is a request to rezone a 1.59-acre parcel at 402 Clay Street Southeast from R5 Plan Residential for a multifamily development. The applicant is Balzer and Associates on behalf of the owner, Taylor Communications LLC. Here's an area of the property outlined in blue. The Midtown Development is directly adjacent. The applicant is proposing to construct two three-story apartment buildings with a total of 72 bedrooms. The development includes a mixture of one- and two-bedroom units, and a proffer to make 20% of the units affordable for residents earning less than 80% annual median income is also proposed. Proposed parking for the development includes 67 vehicular parking spaces and 22 bike parking spaces. Here's the master plan included with the application. Rezoning requests are evaluated for their conformity to the comprehensive plan, the relationship to the proposal, to the general planning program of the town, and whether or not the change furthers the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the community. The need and justification for the change, which is the applicant's burden to prove, and the effect of the proposed change on the surrounding neighborhood and public facilities. The comprehensive plan, future land use designation is medium-density residential. The 2021 comprehensive plan acknowledges that housing affordability in Blacksburg is a growing problem. Housing programs assess whether housing is affordable by comparing a household's income to a percentage of the area median income. Households earning less than 80% of the AMI are considered low-income by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The proposed PRD is offering to dedicate 20% of the units for residents making less than 80% AMI. The comprehensive plan also notes that an increasing number of graduate students, international graduate students, professional students, post-doctorate researchers, and other young professionals live and work in Blacksburg. These types of residents may require or desire different housing needs than multifamily student housing and single-family detached residential housing that is more common in the town. The proposed PRD includes a mix of only one bedroom and two-bedroom units with smaller yet adequate living spaces that is in short supply in Blacksburg. In the zoning ordinance, there is a statement of purpose for each district. The PR district allows flexibility for applicants to determine the best standards that meet the intent of the proposed development and the district purpose. The intent of the district can be met in a number of ways. In exchange for flexibility, the application plan and proffers are binding. Any substantive changes would require the applicant to amend the PRD through the public hearing process. This map shows the current zoning of the parcel and surrounding areas. In the zoning ordinance, there are three types of regulations that govern new development. The planned residential district allows an applicant to propose most of the district standards, but use and design standards and development standards still apply unless modifications are specifically requested. District standards apply to all development within a particular zoning district. The existing and proposed standards are found on the table and in the staff report. The applicant proposes a 20-foot front yard setback and 15-foot side and rear yard setbacks. The proposed maximum height of the building is 42 feet. Open space is required as both a district standard in the PR district and as a use and design standard for multifamily. A minimum of 20% is required. The open space requirement can be reduced or eliminated based on certain criteria. The applicant has asked to eliminate the open space requirement based on the property's proximity to downtown, the short distance to services and transit, the decency that provides good transition to adjacent zoning districts, nearby public open space, and the proposed future connections to sidewalk on Clay Street and Midtown Trail. Use and design standards govern the development of a particular use in a zoning district. Use and design standards for multifamily uses are intended to provide an attractive, street-oriented development with appropriate connections and open space. The standard for sidewalk connections states that sidewalk shall connect each unit to the parking area serving that unit, to other units on-site, and to other buildings or uses on adjacent lots. The development proposes connections from each building entrance to the parking areas, mailboxes, and trash, and recycling containers. The internal sidewalks also connect to the future Midtown Trail and future Clay Street sidewalk.
That's serious.
The standard for street elevations requires at least one street-oriented entrance that contains the principal windows of the front unit. The applicant is requesting an exception to this use and design standard because the two apartment buildings face internal to the site, and their main entryways face the parking lot rather than Clay Street. And here's a rendering to show how the side of the buildings would appear from Clay Street. The applicant is proposing a reduction in parking from the required 1.1 spaces per bedroom for multifamily to 0.93 spaces per bedroom. The total parking will include 47 standard, 20 compact, and 488 spaces. 18 bicycle spaces are required for this project, and 22 covered spaces are proposed. Landscaping is required to be provided per the zoning ordinance. The minimum required tree canopy coverage for multifamily uses is 10%. Street trees are also required to be provided on all public street frontages. The development is proposing 40% canopy coverage that would include new and existing trees internally and on the periphery of the site. A total of six street trees are required along Clay Street, and eight are provided. An additional 12 trees are provided along the future Midtown Way road connection and trail. A number of parking lot trees are also provided throughout the site. As mentioned previously, as part of the reasonable application, the applicant has requested modifications to eliminate the open space and street elevations requirements. And that concludes my presentation.
Do we have questions for Matthew? Thank you. Did you tell, did you tell us what the planning commission recommendation was?
They voted to accept it.
Six-two.
Six-two, thank you. I don't know whose they are, but there's a set of keys sitting there that somebody will come back for probably, chief. It's here in the first row. Thank you. Yes.
Applicant presentation, I may, thank you for the time. I won't take very long, it's been a long night, reminds me of the old Midtown days.
Not in a good way, I guess.
I will speak briefly to justification delay at the beginning of the year. You know, our team met, and with the uncertainty of federal budgetary priorities is the probably political way of saying that, we were just uncertain about getting a large loan for a project under certain subsidized housing programs. So we just wanted another option. Larry and Kim worked, was a great representation of town, worked and negotiated with us, and we came up with the housing choice without your program, which we feel is a good alternative in case we weren't able to get a large loan. So excited about this, decided to build the project. If you have any questions, I'm here. Gretchen Merrick with Balzer is here, instead of Steve usually, but happy to answer any questions.
We had an email, I think, today or yesterday.
It was today.
Today. Just asking about the connections to Midtown. Could you just talk a little bit maybe about that?
Sure. We, we have a small connection out to Midtown Way, in case people weren't to come Clay Street, or if people that live in the townhomes on Midtown want to come out on Clay Street rather than go through the whole development. We have a bike lane that goes through, we've created sort of a buffer between those of, you know, stop areas to prevent bikes from just cruising through, and any cars or people or anything. But, yeah, we just felt a connection to Midtown was appropriate, and to give not only Midtown a connection to go out to Clay Street rather than going through the whole development, but also the apartments, to go out to the traffic, the signalized area out on the other side. And empties out into a public road, it's not going into a private development, it's public Midtown Way that it'll go out to.
Connectivity is better than being disconnected.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Susan, sorry. The, the, I assume these are market-rate apartments?
For the?
AMI. What, what is market rate for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom? You know, that's the question I was going to ask.
In two years, I don't know exactly what it'll be, because that'll be about when these are built, but I mean, right now, it's probably $1,000 a bed in Blacksburg, maybe higher, but I, I can't speak to what it's going to be.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Ian, the same email we got, the person was concerned about the connectivity. They also brought up that they understood this development, that it was being presented that the amenities of the Midtown Development were being offered to the residents of this development. So my first question is, are there amenities for the HOA members in that development, or is our citizen confused not realizing that the public amenities are available to everyone?
Sure, Jerry. So, Midtown Park, Public Park just donated last fall, that is accessible to the whole public, not just our Clay Street apartments, but also anyone in Blacksburg slash the community could go to that park.
I walked through there today.
Grass is starting to grow over there, we're excited about it. So there are amenities on Midtown, majority of them, all of them are public right now. The park, eventually, there'll be a Plaza and Commons over there that will be donated to the town, and then those restaurants will be public as well. So just having that open amenities for the public is why we reduced that open space or had that exception, and it's equal opportunity for everyone, townhomes, Midtown townhomes, general public, so it's not really townhome-specific, those amenities.
Okay, thank you.
Trail as well, public trails.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And do we have now public comment on ordinance 2068? Seeing none, and I assume we have no rebuttal. Rebut yourself. What is council's pleasure on ordinance 2068?
I move approval of ordinance 2068.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Can I say one thing first?
Yeah.
So on planning commission, I voted against this proposal, and I voted against it because I had concerns about the length of the affordable housing, because we, the ones we'd been exposed to in the community were longer. And staff and the applicant explained things very well to all of us, we all got a nice lesson in that, so I feel much more comfortable supporting this proposal. Also, I was a little bit concerned about some of the resident amenities, in particular the bike parking, and, and they've offered to cover. So all in all, the applicant was very responsive to my concerns at planning commission, so I feel very confident in supporting it tonight.
Thank you.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Moving on to ordinance 2070, to amend town code section 5-701 of the subdivision ordinance pertaining to construction and design of sanitary sewer. And we start with the staff presentation from Carolyn Howard.
Thank you. Okay. Ordinance 2070 proposes revisions to section 5-701 of the subdivision ordinance to do three things. One, allow by right ejector pumps for wastewater from basement levels as per the recently adopted town sanitary sewer standards and specifications section. Two, to clarify that step-stake systems are required for any subdivisions to be developed within the Tom's Creek Basin. And three, remove references to former definitions of subdivisions. That's the end of my presentation, any questions?
We, we know you spent a long time on that, so thank you.
Very simple.
Yeah. Presentation for a long process. Thank you. Do we have public comment on ordinance 2070? Seeing none. What is council's pleasure?
I move approval of ordinance 2070.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
And lastly, ordinance 2071, to amend town code section 12-309 to lower speed limits on certain town streets.
Maeve Gould has the staff report.
This initiative proposes reducing speed limits on select town streets, and the goal of the initiative is to provide a safer environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other vulnerable road users. There has been a significant increase in people There has been a significant increase in people using all different wheeled mobility devices in addition to people walking and biking, so we're seeing a lot more people using e-bikes, e-skateboards, scooters, et cetera, and this can lead to an increase in the possibility for conflicts between these various users. And data shows that reducing speed significantly reduces the severity of crashes, and pedestrians are more likely to survive a crash where speeds are reduced. We've seen several other Virginia communities successfully implement lower speeds to improve safety, including Leesburg, Arlington County, Richmond, Norfolk. Roanoke is also working on a Vision Zero initiative. And so, planning staff looked at several areas in town for possible implementation of reduced speeds, and we worked with other town departments to identify the downtown area and 16 squares as a Phase 1 location. This is a business district with high pedestrian and bike volume and high vehicular volume, and it is also adjacent to campus. It's a little difficult to see on the screen, but this map shows the new proposed speeds. The red streets, which there are only a few, are those that are proposed to go to 15 miles per hour. Yellow are those that are proposed to go to 20 miles per hour, and green is 25 miles per hour. So you can see this is primarily the downtown area, including the 16 squares, and we also included Main Street as an arterial. We have a couple of collectors that are included, such as a portion of Clay Street and a portion of Roanoke Street, and then the rest of the streets are local, local streets. So primarily, we're proposing a reduction of 5 miles per hour from 25 to 20. In 2021, the Virginia General Assembly passed legislation allowing localities to reduce speed limits below 25 miles per hour in residential and business districts. Speed limits are designated in Blacksburg's Town Code, so the ordinance before you tonight codifies the reduction in speed for the streets in the Phase 1 area. Additionally, through this process, we identified that there were several inaccuracies and some areas that needed some clarity in this section of the code, as well as streets that already had reduced speeds that were not in the code, such as a portion of Allegheny Street and some other streets like Midtown Way that were built with new construction at lower speeds. So this ordinance cleans up those items as well, in addition to the reduced speeds on select streets. If the ordinance is approved this evening, we will continue with public outreach and engagement. We have a Let's Talk Blacksburg page where the public can get information about the initiative and ask questions. We plan to do more public education closer to implementation so that people are aware of the changes that would be occurring. Any comments that we receive regarding requests for lower speeds in other areas will be considered for future phases of the initiative. In addition, we have been working with the police department on collecting some speed data in the Phase 1 area prior to implementation, so we've gathered some data on South Main Street, Roanoke Street, Lee Street, and we have a few other streets planned, and then we will also plan to gather speed data after implementation so that we can look at that data and see what the impact may be. We also worked with a traffic engineering consultant to complete an analysis of the reduced speeds on Main Street signal timing. They looked at the impacts of delays, levels of service, and queues, and the results indicated no significant impact on vehicular traffic flow. We received this analysis on February 26th. And we're currently working on identifying the location of all the speed limit signs within the Phase 1 area, as those will all need to be switched out, and we are also going to work with Public Works on identifying where additional signage may be needed. The new speeds will not go into effect until the signs actually are changed, and so our goal is to complete implementation of the initiative in late spring of this year. And that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm assuming.
Would you say?
Sorry. I'm assuming late spring means after graduation.
That's probably what it will be May after the semester ends, is likely.
That seems wise.
And then it'll be new for when folks come for the fall semester.
Hey, sorry. No significant impact, is that different from no impact, and if so, how?
So they identified some very small delays, like one-second type delays.
That's what we're talking about, is like?
One vehicle, that type of thing. So there were some very slight modifications that can be made in the field to just optimize the flow.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public comment? We will when it goes into effect.[1714.91][1714.91](Laughter) Okay. What is Council's pleasure on Ordinance 2071?
I move for approval of Ordinance 2071.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oliver?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Citizen comments, I'm guessing none. Were you a citizen?
No.
No, okay.[1747.62][1747.62](Laughter) None anymore.
No, I'm a citizen, but I'm actually off to go on town now.
Okay. Unfinished business? New business? Council announcements?
I just want to remind everybody it is Women's Month at Virginia Tech, so to please check out the Women's Center at Virginia Tech website to see all those calendar entries, and to also remind folks out there listening that it is Virginia Tech's spring break, and so many of our residents are out of town. It's a great time to go down to restaurants, check out a movie, and just have fun in Blacksburg.
Any else? Okay, we are adjourned.